All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have a work session this afternoon. We're going to talk about a difficult subject for us, and that is high school start times difficult because I know most of the board, if not all the whole board, understands the value, but we also understand the realities of funding and the need to make sure that the decisions we make are decisions that are supported by the community. So with that, let me turn this work session over to Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is that hour that we will go over with you your school start time survey results, hopefully give a clear understanding for those listening by live stream, an understanding of our process of what we actually went through with our community meetings, and then the actual results. And then at the end, Madam Chair, members of the board, we are certainly available to answer any questions you might have and hear your discussion. With that, let's begin. Mr. Nguyen?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. This afternoon, we will review the results of the school start time survey. Here with me to present are Ms. Sherry Bobinski, Director of Media Relations, and Dr. Chen An, Senior Director of Research, Accountability, and Grants. I will provide a brief background to revisit later school start times along with the four cost-neutral models. Ms. Bobinski will present the communication-
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you bring the mic a little closer to your ... Thank you.
How's that?
That's much better.
All right. I will provide a brief background to review or revisit the later school start times along with the four cost-neutral models. Ms. Bobinski will present the communication strategy, and Dr. An will present the survey results and responses. And once completed, we will answer any questions that you may have. At the request of the school board, Transportation Services was asked to revisit later school -- later start times for high school. The research by national organizations is clear that a later start time is beneficial for adolescent students. Previously, a number of start time models were developed using his district's computerized routing software. These models created significant cost of additional buses and drivers. Due to budgetary constraints, those models were eliminated from consideration. The goal of the current models was to be cost-neutral, not to add buses or teachers. Transportation Services, the Communications Division, and the Research, Accountability, and Grants Office worked to construct a survey to gather input from all stakeholders. Stakeholders included students, parents and guardians, community partners, OCPS employees, and others. And others would include anyone that does not fall into the other categories, such as a family member or a caregiver. Next, I would like to provide a brief overview of the four cost-neutral models under consideration. Model A is the current bell time schedule. The proposed start time models, again, will be cost-neutral for both buses and teachers. Model B just moves each tier 20 minutes later, with high schools starting at 7:40. Model C, these are start times based on the simulations for high schools to start at 8:00 a.m., followed by elementary schools, and then middle schools. The later start time for middle school is due to the time needed between the end times between elementary and middle school. This would be the time needed to drop off elementary students and then get to the next middle school to be on time for the afternoon dismissal. And Model D, these are start time models based on the simulations for elementary schools to start at 8:00 a.m., followed by high school, and then middle school. Again, you'll see the later start time for middle school, which is due to the time needed.
That was my fault. I was trying to manipulate it throughout the whole room to get your voice a little bit louder, and that backfired.
That's okay.
Just pull it in a little bit closer.
And so finally, the later start time for middle school would be due to the time needed at the end of the day between high school and middle school tier. This would be the time needed to drop off high school students and then get to the middle schools on time for the afternoon dismissal. Next, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Bobinski.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. There was a comprehensive communication strategy rolled out for the community meetings, which included Connect Orange messaging. We recorded and sent 41 broadcasts announcing 11 meetings that resulted in 792,000 calls to parents and staff members. The calls were made one week prior as a save the date, and the night before as a reminder for each meeting. The 792,000 calls contains multiple numbers to households, such as a mom and dad, and duplicate messages sent on different days. Connect Orange messages were also delivered in email to the same groups of parents and staff in each school board member district. The emails totaled 513,000 emails sent. That number is lower because not all parents share an email address with the district. Messages were sent in English and Spanish, as well as an additional message in Haitian Creole for District 5 upon request. Special graphics were created for social media, website pages, and newsletters to promote all 11 meetings. All messaging included links and information on how to access the district website, where audiences were connected to the school start time webpage. We released information on all community meetings to the media, which translated into 91 stories covered on local TV, radio, and in local newspapers from September 19th to October 30th. Those stories reached an estimated 2.5 million viewers, listeners, and readers in the central Florida region. That data is collected by our media coverage software vendor. The media also attended several meetings providing live coverage prior to and after particular meetings. Social media also played a big role in the promotion of the community meetings on Facebook and Twitter. Individual graphics were posted a week before each meeting to serve as a save the date in each of the school board member districts. The Facebook post reached 60,000 accounts. Twitter post reached 12,000 accounts. The social media posts were also scheduled as events so that they could be saved directly to personal calendars. From our data, 648 people stated that they were interested in attending or were attending one of the community meetings. In all, there were 11 community meetings with 508 attendees. I will now turn it over to Dr. An to address the survey results.
Thank you. In the next several slides, we would like to share the survey results with you. We will discuss the school start time survey administration, respondents, and key findings, both overall and by stakeholder group. The survey items were developed collaboratively by the Transportation Services Department, Communications Division, and Research, Accountability, and Grants Office. The survey was reviewed extensively by the team to ensure best practices were followed. Once the survey was finalized, the Research, Accountability, and Grants Office loaded the survey into the Quotrex platform in the six most commonly spoken languages in OCPS: Arabic, English, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, Spanish, and Vietnamese. The survey was made available via an anonymous link from September 9th through October 31st of 2019, was shared at community meetings held by school board members across the district, and posted on the OCPS website. Participants were asked to indicate the categories that best described their connection with OCPS. For example, OCPS student, OCPS parents, guardians, community partners, OCPS employees, and other. Responses are reported in each table by stakeholder group. If a respondent selected more than one stakeholder group, for example, a respondent listed he or she was an OCPS employee and a parent or guardian of a child in OCPS, his or her responses were included multiple times in the table. Whereas for overall results, each respondent selection was only counted once. As demonstrated on the slide, the largest number of responses were collected from OCPS parent and guardians. The number is 20,770. Followed by OCPS students, the number is 7,600. And OCPS employees, the number is 5,238. There is a sizable number of responses collected from community partners. The number is 578. And those that selected the category "other," the number is 797. Students were asked what type of school they attend. There were 7,577 survey responses reported for type of school the student attends. The majority of student responses came from high school students. We have 68.4 percent. Respondents were then asked in separate questions to indicate their level of support for each of the proposed models. The scale provided after each model included the following options for the respondent to select: strongly support, somewhat support, neither support nor oppose, somewhat oppose, and strongly oppose. Results to the level of support for each model can be found on the next four slides. The highest number of responses for all stakeholder groups reported that they strongly support Model A, in which we propose to maintain current school start times. Additionally, the overall values indicate that more than half of all responses strongly support this model. The percent is 52.2 percent. The largest number of responses collected for all stakeholder groups reported that they somewhat support Model B, in which we propose to move school start times by 20 minutes. Additionally, the overall values indicate that most of the responses fell in the somewhat support category for this model, 32.0 percent. There is more variation across response options on the scale for this model. The largest number of responses for all stakeholder groups reported that they strongly oppose Model C, in which we propose to move school start times by 40 minutes. Additionally, the overall values indicate that more than half of all responses strongly oppose this model selection. The percent is 52.1 percent. More than 50 percent of all responses for all stakeholder groups reported that they strongly oppose Model D, in which we're proposed to move school start times by 40 minutes and switch elementary and high school. Additionally, the overall values indicate that the majority of all responses strongly oppose this model selection. The percent is 58.3 percent. The next four slides display the level of support for each model reported by students in each grade level band. Similar to the overall student results, the highest number of student responses for all grade levels reported that they strongly support Model A. For Model B, although overall OCPS responding students reported that they somewhat support the model, the grade-specific responses vary. The largest number of student responses collected from elementary, middle, and other schools reported that they strongly opposed Model B, while the largest number of K-8 and high school responding students reported that they somewhat support Model B. Similar to the overall student results, the highest number of student responses for all grade levels reported that they strongly oppose Model C. Similar to the overall student results, the highest number of student responses for all grade levels reported that they strongly oppose Model D. The next four slides display the level of support for each model reported by respondents in each geographic location. The highest number of responses for all locations reported that they strongly support Model A. The highest number of responses for all locations reported that they somewhat support Model B. The highest number of responses for all locations reported that they strongly oppose Model C. The highest number of responses for all locations reported that they also strongly oppose Model Respondents were asked to rank the models where one was their most preferred model and four was their least preferred model. The average rank per model is reported on this slide. Model A is the most preferred model across all stakeholder groups. Model B was the second preferred model, followed by Model C, and then Model D. When breaking the data into grade levels, we can see that OCPS students preferred Model A the most across all grade levels. Same as students, OCPS parents, guardians preferred Model A the most across all grade levels as well. Model A was also the top choice for OCPS employees across their roles. The average rank per model by geographic location is reported on this slide. Similar to previous results by stakeholder group, Model A is the most preferred model across all geographic locations. Model B was the second preferred model, followed by Model C, and then Model D. Respondents were also asked to select the top three factors that the district should consider when making a decision about school start times. Options included as choices for consideration were athletics, before and after-school activities, childcare before school, childcare after school, financial implications for parents, guardians, health factors, impact on student achievement, schedule for some OCPS employees, student safety to and from school, students caring for younger siblings, student work schedules, and traffic and times for student pickup and drop off. The top three factors identified were before and after-school activities, impact on student achievement, and student safety to and from school. For this survey item, additional factors could have been added by respondents as an open-ended response and will be analyzed separately. There were 8,299 separate responses added for consideration in the open-ended item, and they are being coded by Hangover Research, an external research partner, for future analysis. A report will be provided in upcoming weeks and will be shared with district leaders and the school board. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to share information regarding the school start time survey results with you. We will now ask Dr. Jenkins to provide you with additional comments.
Madam Chair, members of the board, certainly a difficult topic for discussion. Ready to answer any questions you might have, and then hear your discussion.
Thank you. Let's begin with Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about, at the beginning, about the numbers, about the total respondents, because you said that if someone indicated that they were both an OCPS employee and a parent, they were counted. So when we're looking at the individual, like, for example, when we're looking at that 31,972 responses, are those true, actual responses? Are those ... could there be double responses included in that 31,972 number?
They can be double. They can have, like, multiple roles. They can be either parent, guardian, or they can be an employee.
So we could have had far fewer than 31,972 responses if someone identified as more than one category, or even three categories, because you could be a parent, a grandparent, and an employee?
Yes.
So when we look, and then follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
And then when we look at strongly support, we ... is it the same thing? Because we're looking at, are there duplicates in those models? So when we look at strongly support, and we're looking at the percentage that strongly support, could there be duplicates in that number which would have increased that percentage?
The overall is actually the unique responses. So every single, when they pick multiple roles, they only counted the ones in the overall line. However, if we break it into different roles, for example, if you are both a student and an employee that's not, if that happens, then you are going to be showed up multiple times in each line, because we report by stakeholder groups. But the overall is always the unique counts.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand. So I know that we did break it down, so when we look at each category, those numbers are accurate and don't have duplicates. But when we looked at that, like, that third slide that we talked about, the strongly support for Model A, and it was the highest at 50, over 50 percent, and it was just an overall number that listed all the categoricals, or all the categories of which you could identify as, is there duplicates in that 52 percent? And would that number be lower if we took out the duplicates?
The overall is the unique counts. So it's the unique responses in the overall row.
All right. So the only one that might have duplicates is the total responses?
No, that's the only one that doesn't have duplicates is the overall line.
Okay, I was about to say those are really good questions until-
You realized?
No, they were great questions. No, and I thank you for that. The answers were clear, too, and it was helpful information.
Thank you.
And it's very helpful for us to know that the overall is unique, because that would be problematic in our understanding of the analysis. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, and when we say unique, that means no duplicates.
Yes.
I want to make sure you're clear on that.
Good point. Okay. Vice Chair Gordon? I'm sorry, got to break that habit. Dr. Gordon?
Thank you. Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. Okay. I would like for us to do one thing for me, that you all may have it together, because since this was not a concern for me, and not a major concern for my district, and it came up in both of my community meetings, they wanted me to ask you, why did you bring this back to the board? This came from the Oak Ridge community, and we had great attendance and great responses. And then we also, it came from the Joneside community, and they wanted to know what board members were concerned about it, because they, the students usually communicate, and a lot of the performing arts students know that it doesn't matter how much you change the time. Some of the schools' performing arts are going to be still singing in the choir room at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, and these parents got to get them there. So they want to know what was your reason, and why did the board do it? And then the second question that I would like to ask, I voted. I voted. And then I wanted to vote a second time, but they said, "Thank you, you've already voted. You cannot vote a second time." And I wanted to vote as a community member that is a taxpayer, and I was voting as an employee. So that question, as I hear Member Gallo ask those questions, and that night at my school at Oak Ridge, when my parents voted, they weren't allowed to vote but one time. It says, "Thank you." So I said, "I'm going to put my name back in here and vote again." I put my name back in at Oak Ridge, and they said, "You've already voted." So I said, "Well, I'm going to another community meeting." I went to another community meeting. I went to Jones. And when I got to that meeting, and my two parents, I said, "Come on, Amor, put your name back in, and let's see if they're going to let you vote as an employee." They said, "You've already voted." So I don't understand the question, and I thought the process, and your staff was with me that night, so I couldn't vote. So I don't know, others are getting in, from what I'm hearing from Member Gallo. So my main concern is, my community would like to know and explain to the community why this was brought back to the board.
So let me answer the first question, as one of the board members that asked us to bring this back. And then if you can address the second question, when somebody identifies themselves as more than one category, how does that get reflected?
But can I get my question answered before you-
I just said I was going to answer-
But don't put yours in there, because they might be like my age and get confused and not remember.
I didn't put something in there. I didn't put something in there. I did not put some ...
Madam Chair.
I have the floor. I have the floor.
You got the floor, but I got the question on the floor.
I have the floor, and I'm going to answer the first question, and-
Do not negate my questions. I'm waiting for the answer. I'm at the end.
Do you want an answer?
Yes.
Then let me answer it. Thank you.
I don't want you to answer. I'm asking staff.
Okay, you're going to ask staff why this board brought it back? Staff, why did this board bring it back?
I'm not asking staff that. I wanted staff to answer some of the questions.
I know-
If you want to do it in an order, that's different. You mighty dirty-
Dr. Gordon, Dr. Gordon, you asked a question. You said the first question is, why did this board bring it back, right? And I wanted to answer that.
Not me, my community.
Right, do you want, I want to answer that question.
Answer, please answer without a question. Just answer. They're listening.
Thank you. So the reason this board wanted to bring it back, and it wasn't the whole board, but that's not, that's not proper protocol.
I know it isn't, and I apologize.
So, thank you.
I'm just so excited like you are.
Now that I have the floor, let me finish. The reason that new board members in particular wanted to bring this back is because it was something that we heard about during the campaign. It was something, I can speak for myself, that as a parent who had students in high school, I found those times did not be conducive to my children being able to wake up and start school fresh and awake. So I felt, and other board members, and I'll let them speak, but I will identify the board members by show of hands, which ones of us felt that this was an important enough issue to come back and revisit. We recognized, I said it over and over again, that the existing, the sitting school board members had been through this, and that we wanted to walk through that, because we did not have the opportunity to learn with you when you learned about community response and all the variables. So we appreciate, as a new board member, I want to express my appreciation to the sitting board members for your patience with us going through this process. A big part of this is financial and logistics, and a big part of it is, whatever we do, if we make a change, as you learned, at the end of the day, if the public is not happy with that change, no matter how incredibly wise we may think the change is, if the public's not happy, as they did before, they can vote in a different set of school board members and reverse it. That's what happened the last time. So this board was, I think, incredibly gracious, the former board members, in allowing the new board members to walk through this process. And I want to thank you again for your patience. I know what it's like to have been a sitting board member with new board members. So that was my reason for wanting to bring it back. Member Kester-Denno wanted to bring it back and have the same conversation. Member Byrd, I think, had a very, a great interest in this, well. Member Gallo did as well. And Member Cobert, you even had said, "Let's, let's look at this one more time. Have we missed something?" Member Gallo, you recognize, I mean, Member, I'm sorry, Member Cobert, did you want to speak to that?
I still got questions.
I know, but I understand, but you asked for an answer, and I answered my position, but I'm just one person. So Member Cobert seemed to indicate she wanted to respond as well. So you wanted to know why did, your constituents want to know why did some members of the board bring this back? I'm speaking for myself, trying to articulate the rest of the board, but if Member Cobert wants to say something. Number Cobert, I will run the meeting as long as I'm chair. Number Cobert.
So, yes, you're, you're right, Madam Chair. Even though the prior board had been through this, it is a matter of continuing concern to the community, that they continue to bring it up. The research is clear, and I do think it is a worthwhile exercise for us to explore together as a new board.
Okay, if there aren't any other board members that want to respond to the question from Dr. Gordon, I'll turn it over to staff to answer the other question.
So the, from the list of options, they could click on the stakeholder groups that were applicable. So the first question asks for which of the following categories best describe your connection with Orange County Public Schools, and provided an option for the respondent to select all that apply. So from the list of options, they could click on the stakeholder group. That were applicable when clicking the question. So they could select multiple when clicking on the question. For example, an OCPS employee that might have children in schools, when taking the survey, could click employee and parent. So when we complete the tables and cross tabulations for reporting, the responses for that prior example would have been counted or reported in the row for OCPS employee and in the row for parent. When you look at overall rows, was the total, that example respondent would only be counted once. That last overall row counts that response once.
Dr. Gordon, follow-up? Any follow-up questions on that? No? Okay. 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 Member Kester-Denno?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Communications Department and the staff for providing so many avenues for people to get engaged and to participate, from all the things that you listed, the phone calls, the emails, the community meetings, the surveys, the websites. I appreciate the survey. The communications were inclusive of our multilingual families. I want to thank the Transportation Department for putting together the models and running all the different scenarios, and helping to answer questions at board meetings and stakeholders at our meetings. stakeholders at our meetings. I want to thank the students and parents and teachers who reached out to us directly to provide a full understanding of how the current school start times affect them, and what changes would mean to your family. And I want to thank my colleagues on the board and the superintendent for spending the time delving into this complicated but important issue. I know we've each heard from folks who asked, as Dr. Gordon mentioned, "Why are we doing this again? And why change what's not broken?" And that's when I shared that we are looking at addressing two issues. First, it's a matter of safety. And second, it's a matter of science and overwhelming research about child development and the importance of sleep. If we are not creating the best learning environment for our students, then I believe the system is broken. First, the matter of safety. Schools start so early for some that kids are waiting for buses in the dark, and sleepy teenagers are pulling out of their driveways as other kids are walking to school. It's not an accident waiting to happen, accidents have happened. Last year, a high school student was shot and killed, walking to school in the dark, and there were no witnesses. Students have been approached by strangers on their way to school. There are more accidents by teenagers driving to school in the dark. And let us not forget all the money, attention, and effort we spend making sure kids are safe once they get to school. Don't we owe our students the safest route to school we can provide? As for the science and the importance of sleep on a developing brain, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends schools not start before eight-thirty a.m. The reason they support this is that the lack of sleep in teenagers is associated with depression, anxiety, risky behaviors, car accidents, and problems with attention and learning. While the survey results show a larger percentage of respondents prefer the current early high school schedule over the other cost-neutral options, I have to ask that if that's a result of asking one group to sacrifice by either going too early, or another group getting home too late, or judging by the number of people asking, "Why are we doing this again?", I question if we provided enough explanation on the research results and the science. It is up to the leaders of the school district to structure the learning environment to value the science that relates to our core mission, which is learning. I recognize that we have competing priorities for limited funds, but removing school-imposed barriers to children's optimal brain development and mental well-being should be of the highest priority. My hope is that we continue to seek resources to create schedules that work for all of our students. The survey does show, on page twenty-one, support for twenty-minute shift of start times. And if we are able to make that small adjustment in our schedule, I believe it will have a big impact on student safety, and won't cost the district a penny. A twenty-minute shift will have minimal impact on after-school activities, or work schedules, or before and after care, but it can save lives. I would like to ask my colleagues to join me in support of starting school twenty minutes later, to give our kids time for the sun to rise, to light their path so they can get to school safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., Member Castor Dental. Dr. Jenkins, you're queued up next, and then we have Dr. Gordon. Okay. Okay.
Actually, Madam Chair, members of the board, I was going to try to clarify in case we needed further clarification of the double counting of individuals. I think that was very clear in the response from staff, so don't feel that it's necessary to ponder that further. I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear from the time that Member Gallo posed the question.
I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins, can I ask you to repeat that?
I will repeat it. I might also mention, so when I queued up earlier, it was to make sure there was clear understanding from staff's explanation. I think they did a good job of making it pretty concise. When you sign up initially, you identify yourself in more than one subgroup, you are counted in those subgroup tabulations, but in the overall, you're only counted once. Hope that was extremely clear. Like to mention also, while we did not debate the research, we did make it available on our website for those who might be interested, and in our script in those community meetings, I know Member Castor Dental appreciates, we specifically said, "We are not going to debate the research, because the research is clear." And so while it wasn't actually put into the script in detail, we offered those documents on the website and said in the script in the meetings that that was not up for debate, the research was clear of our adolescents needing that time for sleep. The other thing I neglected to mention, and staff will correct me for omitting it, every time this comes up, it is mentioned that Osceola County has already moved back their high school start times, and we like to remind folks, they moved theirs to seven-twenty, which is where ours currently is for high school start time. Just another clarification, since we've heard that repeatedly. Interested in any further discussion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Member Gallo?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Member Castor Dental, for your very eloquent response to the survey, and how you explained it so well, so that nobody else has to. So we appreciate that.
I agree with Member Castor Dental that the research is very clear. When I read the survey results, it did give me pause. Anytime that you have fifty-two percent of our constituents, our community, pushing back and saying they'd like to leave start times exactly where they are, it has to give you pause, you have to look at that data. I agree with Member Castor Dental in, are we putting in the surveys because of the times are cost-neutral and what we chose to put out there? Are we putting parents against community members? Are we putting high schools against middle schools? The largest complaint I got was from middle school parents and middle school teachers, who basically said, "You cannot send my child to school any later than nine-thirty, we're already one of the latest districts to go to middle school at nine-thirty, and you cannot, I can't have them coming home at six o'clock," or, it was just that the times were too late. So those were the biggest complaints that I got from middle school. So with that being said, I, I think that, and this is my personal belief, that we got the results that we got, because I don't know that anybody was excited about any of the models that we put out there. And I understand that we put them out there because they were cost-neutral, but I'm wondering if we can look at some other options that might be available, because the research is very clear. And when I was looking at the survey results, and then I went back, and I started pulling the attendance data, and I started looking at the attendance in middle schools, and I started looking at the attendance in high schools, and when I pulled the attendance for first period in high schools and second period in high schools, it's at eleven percent, eleven percent of our high schoolers don't show up for that first period, eleven percent. So when you start looking at academics, which the research tells us that later start times truly impacts academics, and when you start looking at chronic absenteeism and the impact that that chronic absenteeism has on our students and on their future, it's a real tangible thing that we can calculate. So I'm concerned about, I'm really concerned now about the attendance from our seventh through eighth grade, but especially when we get into the high school twelfth, it kept going, it kept going, it kept increasing. So from eighth to ninth grade, it, our lack of attendance increased by like point-eight percent, and it went all the way up to one-point-three percent drop in attendance by the time we got to twelfth grade, and it was worse when you looked at just those first and second period. So when I look at those numbers, it tells me that as a board, it would almost be irresponsible for us not to do something, not to do something for our kids and for our communities, and to make sure that our kids are healthy, happy, and they're actually in school so they can learn and be successful. With that being said, I would like to look at the twenty minutes pushout, but switching elementary and high schools, to see if we can make that work. My biggest issue is middle schools, I really don't want to change middle school times past that nine-thirty mark. I think, I think that our parents and community members have been pretty clear about that. So I'm wondering if we could, we could look at that model, or even look at the Hillsborough model, where elementary school is starting at seven-forty-five, seven-fifty, pushing it back a little bit, so that we can really maintain the numbers on the middle school while putting our high schoolers to school later. Maybe we could run some more models, because I think that this is a conversation that we need to continue to have, and even though the results that we got today were kind of clear with that fifty-two percent, I do question the validity, not the validity, but just the, the options that we put out there may have not been really liked by the community. So I, I don't know that this should be okay, here's the results, let's not have a further discussion. I would like to run some more models, look at it again, because I think, as Castor Dental, Member Castor Dental mentioned, this is a conversation worth having, and we do need to do due diligence and make sure we do our part as school board members, to make sure we're doing right by our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I just, to summarize, you feel like we need to, to move high school back in some way, shape, or form, and you think that possibly looking at another alternative, the elementary school first, but starting elementary school earlier than, than the eight o'clock which we proposed here, is something that wasn't on the table?
And even, we did a swap with the forty-minute, like we pushed it out, if we could do a switch with the twenty-minute and see if that, if that calculation works.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Jenkins, I can't recall, did we record this meeting?
Yes, it's actually being broadcast.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure, because right now, I'm like, do I want to keep copious notes?
Yeah, I've, I've got the note down. Madam Chair, if I may?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
So I believe we already went through the Hillsborough model, that was something that we looked at previously. Hillsborough has also indicated, rather than seven-twenty, they're actually delivering children around seven-ten, which means they're picking them up earlier, but we're happy to look at the switch, the twenty-minute drop, and the switch for elementary to be first, rather than high school. We can certainly run that model. But Hillsborough, we've looked at.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to make a comment on that. We've already, we've taken a look at Hillsborough, Medifac, and the several other districts in the large area, and what they're going through. What I really feel that this board needs to take a look at, I understand your dilemma, and what you're going through, but the key is that if we, we need to look at how this board, how we can go about opening up our elementary schools, like we did in years past. When I came, all of us were coming in, except high school was coming in at seven-thirty, but elementary was coming in at eight, eight o'clock, high, I mean, in middle school, but it would be ideal if everybody comes in at eight. I'm being honest with you. If everybody, and we've done that, I came out of South Carolina, Charleston, South Carolina, everybody left the house, and everybody got on their little elementary bus, close being African-American, we didn't have a bus. We had to walk, okay? All right, I don't, don't let me bring that up, because I'm, I'm already fired up today anyhow. So what we as a board need to look at time, because what's killing us is transportation. And you're trying to juggle our babies around based on research. Those research, they're not, they're not done here with the families. Our situation, we're in a tourist town, we, people move here to live and enjoy life. It is totally different. But we, even what, Dr. Jenkins, I was going to ask you to repeat what they did. While we were up there debating getting rid of our time, Osceola just went and picked it up without even asking. The only thing they did, they, you know, we begged them to come and talk with us at our schools, and we were able to debate and get some of the things that we desired, but they just said, and they did it, and they said why they did it, because it was for financial reason. We really need to look to see how we can get the buses. We keep saying, "Not enough buses." The state needs to fund the buses. If we, we have over two-hundred-and-seven-thousand students, we're up there debating, I'm laughing at, I'm laughing, I'm laughing, at this present board that I sit on, I'm laughing at us, because the next group of board members, just like you have your desires, and they have their desires, they're going to come in with theirs. And yes, I've been through the flip and the flop up here, and the flop and the flip. And it is not a healthy thing when I see so many other things that we need to be going after. Our money needs to be converted with, with, with the, looking at eight o'clock for elementary, eight o'clock for high school, eight o'clock for middle school. And then working with the superintendent to see, how can we make that happen? How mu, I don't care how much money, I love that y'all are talking back, when I get talked back, I get scolded, but it doesn't matter to me, see? It's about color, and I know it, and I will say it as long as I sit up here, because I see it, and I don't care what you say, I'm just going to say it. I'm, I'm telling you, you cannot keep moving people, children, and flipping and flopping them back and forth. Now, the survey is clear, but we don't, we're not voting tonight, or anything like that. This is just a work session. Businesses, several businesses called, and, and they ask us, that's why they get on those calendar committees and everything, so they could at least have something to do with time, but they have to run their businesses. They reminded me, Ms. Gordon, please remind your board that these parents in your school systems are working for us. We open at a certain time, and we close our entertainment very, very late. You have to take everything into consideration. And then they said, "Parents have split schedules," this is what they asked me to bring up here, "They have split schedules where they have to go to work, then split, then come back in later on." Then they said that the students are home, and that's why maybe we have done so many great things with outside agencies, with caregivers, for the preschool, and establishing, we used to have an after-day care in every school when I started in nineteen-sixty-seven here. We had after-school care, that those parents could get there, pick up their kids, take them home, get everybody settled, and then head back to work. You keep forgetting, some of us work two jobs. They wanted me to remind this board that I work two jobs. Another thing, if we are growing, stop shrinking the buses. And Osceola, this is what we said to Osceola, cutting back on the buses is not going to help, Osceola is going to explode. Orange Center is already exploding. We are growing, you can't cut time when you have bodies, you're going to have to get some buses to put those bodies in. All schools, as I stated, they said, "Start at the same time." Student safety is at the utmost. Nobody's safe out there. I don't care how early you start, I take out at six in the morning, you can't get on the trail going south, you can't get on the trail going north. You're listening to the media? I listen every morning. I can't get on John Young to get to Kissimmee, I can't get, I can't get on the turnpike. Everything is crowded. Everything is, no such thing as safety out there. You don't know who's going to run into you, and the roads are extremely crowded. You may not be up like I am, five o'clock in the morning, and I'm listening at channel nine, channel six, channel two, channel eighteen, thirty-five, I'm getting all the local, because they're telling you where the traffic is. And know what their parents call and told me? "Ms. Gordon, that's us driving to work." We are your parents, we are your parents. The twenty minutes later is not going to be the answer. Twenty minutes later is not going to be the answer. What good is it when I get to my school, I used to get there at six-thirty, then they changed the hour for us to seven, and then they change it again to seven-fifteen, and then last year, now I get in there at ten minutes to eight, which is ten minutes of my time, our time, because our school starts at eight. But the buses are already lined up, but the kids can't get off the bus, because that's not their time. They said, "Please, look in these different districts that you're asking us to research, and see how those kids have to stay on that bus for a little period of time." And yes, when I gave my parent meeting, I made it perfectly clear, as a superintendent, I said, "Give me the research, let me date it, let me see where it came from." The research was clear for wherever they did that research. But did they give the people that they gave that research to, my parents asked me to ask this board, did they give them a survey also? Thank you.
Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand the facts of the research results for more time for sleeping for our high schoolers, but we have middle schooler, students, in risk as well if we push the time for later time. Like school board member Kat Gordon, I have hundreds of emails asking why we're trying to change the start time, and they don't want... the time to be changed. We provided, but you know, they are asking, the constituents of Dr. Gordon are asking why we are bringing this topic again. So I have the same situation with my constituents in District Two. We provided research articles in our website as well, and the majority of my District Two still advocating for not changing the start times. I would like to speak on behalf of single mothers, single fathers, low income students that have jobs to support their families, athletes of middle school, because our middle school don't have lights on their fields, on behalf of families that have multiple children in different school levels. I cannot imagine, I remember, I got divorced maybe ten years ago, and I have one in elementary school, one in middle school, and two in high school. I cannot handle this pushing, no time. So now that I'm thinking and I realize this situation and having conversations with my constituents, I agree with Dr. Gordon. I believe that we are not ready to change the start time until we have more funding for buses and provide support to take care for the children before and after school for our working families. So as parents, we have to make arrangements with our high schoolers. I have a high schooler. So you know what? Go to sleep, she's here today, tonight, Taylor. So I'm going to take care of that cell phone and I'm going to say, you know what? I don't want you to go to sleep after ten P. M. because you need to sleep more because you have a different schedule and you're going to start at seven twenty. So that's my point of view on behalf of my constituents of District Two.
Thank you, Member Lopez. Member Gould.
So the research is clear from the pediatric studies, but we're not in a community of utopia in the metro Orlando area. We have a lot of social determinants that affect all of our families. Transportation is one of them. When you look at a lot of the districts and now I didn't go back because I researched this twice now, but the districts that had the ability to really change start times were also urban districts that had robust multimodal transportation systems where it was successful. And they could rely and partner with those systems in order to get the kids to school and not put them on the road. I would not be in favor of moving start time to eight A. M. for high schoolers for two reasons, without the additional buses that we could talk about. But even I'm thinking eight is is a little too late and even the twenty minutes, because if they start at seven forty and they get out at two forty, and we have households that rely on income in order to stay in their house or put food on their table from some of our children, they won't make work because you can't get anywhere unless it's literally next door in twenty minutes. Get out of the school parking lot and get to your job by three o'clock on shift change. And if you need to change your clothes, you can't do it. And if you're on a bus, you definitely can't do it. And oh, by the way, in some neighborhoods, the buses stop at six o'clock at night. So that means they'd have to give up their job in because they couldn't get home. So there's a lot of research in a lot of different directions that I think when we are talking about this, we can't look at it in a silo. We have to look at how it affects our whole child and our whole families. And while I wish we lived in utopia, my boys love to stay up late still and in their, I'm putting this in quotes for people who can't see that, they're adults at twenty-five and twenty-one, quote, quote, it's their nature to stay up late. I don't think when they were in school that would have made a difference. Other point I wanted to make on the safety is, at least in my side of town, a lot of our junior and seniors drive. We would be dropping them on the roads at the peak of rush hour. Yes, it's a little dark part of the time right now, but I don't know where there's a higher risk in the peak of rush hour or when it's dark when you look at statistically, the increase in accidents during peak rush hour. And that's with people that, you know, go to work every day and are still trying to shave or put on lipstick or talk on their phone or I had somebody tell me today, they saw somebody driving with a phone and a book on the highway with their elbows. So, you know, and it was middle of the day. So I wish we had all of the money in the world. I wish we had the thirty million dollars to start everybody at the same time, maybe at seven forty-five, so that we could get kids to their jobs in the afternoon and their extracurricular and not have middle schoolers go late. I, it was very clear from my community. We had a few who talked to me about the study, but the majority of the people said, we're tired of this subject. Why do you keep bringing it up until something in this community changes dramatically or you have the money to fund it? Why do you keep bringing it up? And so I got a lot of that from the grocery store to the email. I, we can't keep middle schoolers to, you know, almost five. They couldn't, I had that with the one year of the flip with my youngest son. And it was, it was, it was incredible what it did to this community living through that. And I wasn't on the board then, but this is my second time through this subject. And and one thing that was left out of here and it even weighted higher was the business community because last time we made sure that we pushed the surveys out through the chambers and the Economic Development Council, and it was even higher percentage of people who came and said, we get it. It's not, we don't agree, but it may not be right for our community.
Thank you. Member Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will you do me a favor, please, Dr. Jenkins, have your staff that they could put the slides up where they showed A, B, C, and D, the models? Oh, I thought I wrote down that you had one with model A, model B, model. That, oh, that might be the one I have. Okay. Okay, okay. I thought I, that might be my notes that I have from the slide. No, it was, it was a starting time, but it was side by side. Oh, okay. Oh, one of my people liked that one. They really did. Okay, well, anyhow, with, go to model C and D. Okay. You could look at model C. You don't even have to look at the wonderful times that they have there. And then I'm thinking about what Member Gould stated about this. She said the seven forty to two forty, that's ideal. But I know we used to get out even earlier. We used to get out real early because we would start real early. Okay. But what would really throw you on model C? I work with kindergarten through twelfth grade every day. Who in the world would leave middle school kids home until nine o'clock? I guess they'll leave the house to go catch the bus. Lord have mercy. Have y'all looked at all the things that middle school kids do before school or after school or doing school? Or have you looked at our behavior centers in all of the districts surrounding us of our middle school students and how they just do little wonderful little things? So what are they going to be doing? From nine o'clock, from the time the parents get up at six, this is the one that throws me, model C. It's no way in the world that I could even endorse model C. And it's insanely because of the middle school. I still believe that nine twenty-five as a teacher and an experienced teacher, nine twenty-five for elementary and kindergarten is way too late. They have lost all their little learning skills and you know you have to give them a little breakfasts and everything. So when will breakfast start? At nine? Dr. Jenkins can answer that for me. She's been a teacher and a principal and she doesn't mind. Okay, on that model. Okay, and other than that, eight eighty-five at the elementary with an extra hour. I know they always want to do that, but I think we've tried as a board to allow different programs to go in and work at the school. That's another area that this board could look into. What can we do, especially for those challenged schools and those schools that need after daycare, you know, after school daycare, and before, before school and after school? Okay, that's model C. I didn't give my opinion. I cannot support that. So model D, I cannot support that one because of the same thing. My, my middle school kids, what are they doing? When are they going to eat breakfast? You do have a breakfast program, Dr. Jenkins, in every school, don't we? So what time are your breakfasts starting in your elementary, middle, and high? I know it varies. Can a staff member answer that for me, please?
Mr. Pacheco.
Can you get, thank you. Breakfast is very important. Matter of fact, a little bit more important than sleep.
Good afternoon. Twenty minutes before the start of school, that is when the buses...
Can you give me some times? Can you give me some times?
In the case of the model D, that will be seven forty for elementary school. Then it will be eight twenty-five for high school and nine fifty-five for middle school.
Thank you. And they don't go to lunch that quick. Some of us don't get lunch. And I go, please don't fire me. We don't get lunch with our middle school kids until one o'clock at my school. Now, the schools, they get it earlier. I'm only speaking for mine and we love it. We're not mad about it because we've given them enough sugar. I'm just kidding. We don't give them any candy. Okay, no candy. Okay, can you go to model? Okay, C and D. B. I know that my learned colleague next to me is asking for the twenty minutes, but because the middle school is so close to ten o'clock, if that time, and I think I hear Member Gallo stating, you know, maybe revamp again if that's what it's all about, or either we vote in another, you know, get consensus or something in another work session or whatever this board decides to do. We've heard the survey loud and clear. I don't think they might want to do another survey. But I think we have work to do. We have a lot of work to do as it relates to transportation growth and getting the word out. We're growing. Somebody needs to help us. The budget, I'm going to Tallahassee. I'm going to Tallahassee on that day. I'm wearing my red. I'm wearing my red on the twenty-first. And I'm going to our school board. I'm already on this board and I'm headed to Tallahassee. I'm letting them know you haven't given us any money to build schools. You haven't given us any money hardly for teacher salary other than what our general counsel just gave us today. And I thank her for that information. And you don't give us anything with helping us with the transportation. And then you give us rules and regulations to cut two miles. Everybody ought to be on a bus. With the way transportation is now, see, you can walk back in the days. How could you even ask a parent to put their children? You, nobody should be walking around the corner. I looked at this today. I just read through my neighborhood in Kissimmee. And I said, let me see what they're doing because we complain about the buses picking up the kids on the highway and they live in the apartment complex and the apartment complex got, you all know how it comes before this board. They got three hundred and fifty units. Well, that mean there's a road going back in there. They could go get those kids. And we asked the board and you know what? Those buses are off the highway and they're going back in there picking up those kids. Some of the roads, you can't do it out with Pam because we tried, remember, on some even the narrower. But no, we should be up in Tallahassee fighting and I'll go with our parents demanding buses for all of our children. Okay, so transportation is a thing for me. I'd like to see what we could do, how we can help the superintendent come up with some ways, how we could talk with Jerry Demings, the mayor, to include us. He's going to do length buses. Well, why can't he do school buses? They used us as an example, said we have more school buses on the road than we have length buses. Chairman, you're a former mayor. I would see you wanting to champion this cause that we be included and have send sale tax to provide school buses for our children. Dr. Castodano, that would be the safety. At least they're on the buses and you know we have some of the safest buses and bus drivers. I, I just can't see juggling our children for a flip and a flop every time we want to be comfortable with something and and get our parents to uncomfortable. Let's begin to provide some things for the parents. The maximum transportation growth is where we need to go and we need to jump on board. I'm calling Jerry as soon as I leave here to say, include us and we'll help you get it if we have to even give up something. All right? And we're going to sign and die, we're going to sign and die on something sooner or later. These children need transportation. We took transportation away from the Magna Kids. And Bill Sibley had to look how dangerous it was for some and stated a little bit back in there. So my, my thing is to work on transportation funding to get everybody on the bus and then you can set your school time. That's my point, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. There's a lot of, there's a lot of information. Let me try to refresh. Okay. First of all, I want to reiterate what I said at our last meeting when we spoke about this. My community, like Member Gould, has been very clear with me that they are not in favor of changing high school start times and not, the responses I got from them were last spring when I held my own community meetings and I talked about it and I also wrote columns for local newspaper, asked for emails and input, and I got a lot. It was before these models went out with these late middle school times. So my responses, I don't feel are a reflection of showing them bad models, which, you know, a lot of people are out there saying, well, there's no good model here. Well, okay, I get that. But the responses I got were strictly high school parents, high school kids. I just had a roundtable with students at Wakava High School, juniors and seniors, and not one of them wanted their high school time changed because they are, you know, they struggle to get in, get to their job on time, you know, they provide, a lot of them provide babysitting for their younger siblings when they get home from school. Like Member Gould said, we have families that are, you know, really struggling financially and they rely on this extra income. They rely on their high school students a lot. So I think that that's something that we, we definitely have to consider. So I'm going to reiterate that as far as my district has been very clear that that's what they want. But I also agree with Member or Dr. Gordon in that we have to start, we have to fight for this transportation money. You know, when we look at this funding, I'm looking here at, what year is this, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, our, our revenues from the state were thirty million dollars. Our expenses were sixty-nine million dollars. That money that they don't give us has to come from our operating budget for all the other things that we have to pay for, including our teacher salaries. So I think that it really comes down to fighting for more transportation money if we want to look at, you know, adjusting times so that a little bit later, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at the, the twenty minute model and with the switch of elementary and high school, just to see what that would look like because I'd like to see what the end times for that would look like. But, but, you know, it's a complicated issue. So I'm just giving, that's my two cents. I'm just giving, that's my two cents from District Seven, though.
Thank you, Member Bird. So I appreciate you. I thought it would be a good idea, although we, these are all cost-neutral options, I thought, for the benefit of this work session and anyone who's tuned in or might turn, and at a future time, they're putting some context to it. And you did that through your numbers, that we get thirty, approximately thirty-one million dollars for what costs us about sixty-seven million dollars this coming year in transportation costs. And that differential does, as you point out, I'm going to say it again, because it needs to be repeated, that comes out of our operating budget, that comes out of the same budget, that we are struggling to give our teachers a raise, to get them to a point where they can afford to live in the community where they teach. So these competing priorities are very, very real problems for us. Meanwhile, several of us were in Tallahassee last week. All of us get to Tallahassee throughout the year during the session. And I hate to be the realist. I'm rarely the realist, because I do like to shoot for the stars. But I think in these conversations, we have to question when the governor has six hundred million for raising all teacher pay to forty-seven. Now, he's got three hundred million for a bonus program. That's almost a billion dollars. You've got the legislature saying, we don't know where in the world that money's going to come from. And the reality of whether or not we are also going to be successful in getting funding out of the legislature to plug that hole in transportation funding, I think, unfortunately, is pretty slim. The one, some of the things that I heard from the handful of folks that did write to me, I heard mixed things. I heard, I heard several comments that they felt that there wasn't enough emphasis on the science and how important it was. And that maybe people would have reacted stronger. But I think most people also recognize that the options, unless we can compress the schedules, unless we have enough money to not have the same bus and the same bus driver make three shifts. Unless we have that extra money, we're not going to have an option that parents and kids are all going to embrace. So this really does come down to a financial dilemma. I think that the comments that a Member Gould made, and that you reiterated, Member Bird, about the reality that we do not live in an ideal world, and the same situation that Dr. Gordon talks about, is that we have students who do have jobs, and that is critical. And we have to consider that we don't live in an ideal, perfect world. So knowing all of those, I think the one question that I have, and I'm not sure, I don't want to put staff on the spot. Don't answer it if you can't. But assuming that we keep our time during the school day the same, we have an extra roughly hour for our high-schoolers, which has proved to be very beneficial in improving our graduation rates. When we talk about the additional cost, it's not, just for the public, it's not the buying the buses. That's one part, but that's a capital one-time expense. And that potentially could be, you know, perhaps that could be rolled into the sales tax, because it's a capital expense. The bigger concern is the ongoing operating expense, the cost of the salaries for the bus drivers, and and I don't know if we have a figure on if we were to merge any of these, like, high-school and elementary and get them closer, so there was some overlap. I know we also have a problem that we end up, this is very complicated, but right now, we have a shift where a bus driver can work a full-time job roughly ten months out of the year. Most people want to work more than ten months out of a year. And we're not competitive, because Disney's paying a lot more than we are. So if we compress the schedules to where one bus driver is only doing two routes, say, it's an eight o'clock and a nine o'clock, they're not going to get a full day's work. So they don't only have a ten-month-out-of-the-year job, they actually have less than an eight-hour-a-day job. And that creates a huge hiring problem for us. So we come down to the issue that even if we try to quantify how much money, it's very hard to quantify, because we don't know how much more we have to pay per hour to find people who are going to work less than a full-time job for less than ten months out of the year. When you put all of those factors together, you begin to understand why we can argue that it makes sense, but we can't make sense of it, because we not only do not have the money, but we can't even imagine what that money is to find the driver pool that will accept those limited hours. That's my understanding of the challenges. If I'm misunderstanding or misstating something, as always, Roberto, Dr., Mr. Win, Mr. Pacheco, please jump in and correct me, because I do not, I do not want to leave this discussion having misspoken. Mr. Win.
You're absolutely. You're absolutely correct. That is our challenge here in central Florida, where the unemployment rate is about less than three percent. And in order to be competitive, you've hit every nail on the head, and turns of a ten-month position. And if we go to a two-tier system, then drivers would have less than an eight-hour day, and that would also cause us a challenge to find people who would work for less than eight hours a day in doing so. And if we put two tiers together, each tier has approximately, somewhere between six hundred and fifty to eight hundred buses. So if we were to put two tiers together, you would add six hundred buses plus eight hundred buses, to have fourteen hundred buses on the road at the same time, to get kids to school at the same time.
And what does that do to the number of drivers? We're also adding drivers to that.
That's correct.
Yes. Which is, again, where I come back to, the buses themselves, the capital expense of the buses is a one-time, relatively a one-time expense, that I think we could find that. It's the ongoing expense of now having additional bus drivers, and more likely, an additional pay per hour, because they're getting less hours. So I a hundred percent agree with the board. This should be, this should be an issue that we're asking the legislature to support. I think the one comment I heard from parents that I think makes a little sense is they felt that the survey that we did reflects these options, but it doesn't necessarily reflect what they wanted to hear. Those who really strongly want us to change for the benefit of the brain felt like if there were a survey that showed that we, our citizens got it, and we'd like to compress those schedules, and we need more money to do that, that that might be a stronger tool to take to the legislature as parents. Maybe there's a way that an advocacy group of parents pursues that. I look at Member Gallo, you, the PTSA, the Recess. That really was more of a citizen-driven advocacy effort. And there is great value in that. And sometimes, when you're in the legislature, you're only going to give so much to one group, but two different groups coming at it from two different purposes could be a strategy or an avenue. I don't think any of us are giving up on this, but I'm not sure either that we have a path forward. You're going to take a look at the twenty-minute shift and come back to the board. And if there's any other outstanding questions, we've got a few more members. But before we do close out, I just want to keep this opportunity open. Any other outstanding questions any board members have before we close out that you think of, definitely put them on the table. So Member Cobert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that's a great idea to get those recess moms on it. If anybody can do it, they can do it. I'm going to start by saying, for those members of the public or the press who think this is a no-brainer, you've got ten very large brains sitting up here that are really struggling. Ten people who want to do the right thing, but trying to find a path, is very, very difficult. When I, when I do look at the numbers on, if we look at simply the twenty-minute shift, I'm inclined to do something rather than nothing. Twenty minutes is incremental, but we're working towards something, and that's okay. And the twenty minutes for our middle-schoolers, I have a middle-schooler, that puts us getting out at four seventeen. That's not five o'clock. That twenty minutes is not that big of a deal, but it's a big deal for our high-schoolers. So, and when I, when I look at combining the survey respondents who were strongly in support, in support, or really neither oppose or agree, you're up to close to sixty percent on your twenty-minute shift. So that says something to me, that incremental would have some impact and very little negative impact. I do think that if we did something like that, middle school seems to be the sticking point. I think we need to strongly look at, in our middle schools, having a study hall in the morning for parents and students, that that might help them. Because that later start time for middle-schoolers seems to be a difficulty. But if we, if we could have a study hall or some kind of program in the mornings, I think that that would help. On the transportation issue? Absolutely. The legislature is funding us at forty-six percent of the actual cost, and we need to go after that. I did propose and talked to our brilliant general counsel about that half penny with Orange County, and there are statutory barriers to doing that. That doesn't mean that we can't advocate to change those laws and make that a possibility. So looking locally to get those dollars to solve our transportation problem could be a solution. So if we make an incremental change now, knowing that we need to solve the financial problem to make a longer-term solution, that could be an option. So at this time, I could support the option B, the twenty-minute option. I'd also like us to take a deeper look at the twenty-minutes-plus-flip elementary and high school. But there too, again, I have to emphasize that it's important that we look at our middle schools and a program in the morning to support those families.
Thank you, Member Cobert. Member Gould.
So I want to add research to this research pot. So we know about the brain research, and it's undeniable. But our local United Way does a report every few years called Alice, and that's asset-limited, income-constrained, and employed people. That report estimates right now that at a minimum survival budget for Florida, or for central Florida, for a family of four is fifty-five thousand dollars. Our current average is forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. Alice found three hundred and forty thousand one hundred and sixty families in the tri-county area are living below poverty. That's forty-seven percent of Orange, thirty-nine percent in Seminole, and fifty-seven percent in Osceola County. So why do I bring that up? I want to go back to my other point. Those, there's so many social deterrents, that if we flip elementary and high school, and we take incomes and childcare away from fifty percent of the families that are in our community, there is a greater burden, in my opinion, on the stress of those families than the, than the sleep is. Because their housing is at risk, their food is at risk, their children are at risk. There's a lot of research that you can look at anything in lots of different directions. But we have got to look at this from an entire community standpoint, and what's best for our families. And this is important data when you're making decisions, even about a twenty-minute difference. Because again, if we go to that seven forty is the, is the common thing in the model, and they get out at two forty, and shift starts at three, I don't know how you get from here to there in twenty minutes, unless the job is across the street from the school. So we just have to be thoughtful about this. And as the chair said, this is, it's not that we're denying data. It's not that we don't want the absolute best for every child to be successful in school, but there's a lot of social determinants to make that success. It's not just sleep. It's the entire stress of those families.
Thank you, Member Gould. Member Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you please go back through the final statistics on Model A from the survey for me, please? It seemed as if it was overwhelming, even when I did add up a couple of other things, and then we asked the questions. A, Model A, I'm not, and let the record reflect on this session, even though we're not voting, and the other colleagues have given theirs, I am definitely speaking in behalf of Model A for the Jones High Community and the Oak Ridge High Community. Those that wanted input, and those that are listening tonight. You know, I take calls up until three AM for those parents that come in at two in the morning. I'll be waiting on your call if you're not happy about Model A. I've been told to bring the message to this board that they are in support of it. Can you go over those strongly supporting, and then will you go with the children, when they did theirs for me? Just that, that information you did on A only. So go back to A. Let me hear it again. I'm sorry, board members, but when you get my age, you're going to be doing the same thing if you stay this long. Okay. Can you go through it? This is the one you said that was overwhelmingly right? I'm asking you to just go back through, just for me. Because I end up with another report. Because sixty percent of the elementary students support this, right? And then I know there's a break, forty-six percent strongly supported. These are your numbers and figures, so.
Yes, so this one is about the highest number of responses for all stakeholder groups reported that they strongly support Model A, in which we propose to maintain current school start times. Additionally, the overall values indicate that more than half of all responses strongly support this model.
Okay, and only four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four overall somewhat supported in that case. So the majority of them supported that. Go to the next one you did on Model A. You might have to skip through a lot of your slides. See, you all had it done so well and nice. I know you prepared for the board, but it was so wonderfully done at the open houses that we had.
So this one is just looking at students.
Yes.
And then we break it by grade-level bands. And then this one is also saying that the highest number of student responses for all grade-level bands reported that they strongly support Model A.
So the high-school students were more in favor of A than Model B, C, and D? I just want to make that clear for me.
So there's one about the preferences. Hold on, let me show you. So this one is about the preferences. We asked them to rank these four models. And then this one just reported by student, the grade bands.
So you can, can you explain that a little bit for me? Please.
So this one is, when breaking the data into grade levels, we can see that OCPS students preferred Model A the most across all grade levels.
But if somebody would look at this, I'm just playing the advocate now. I mean, if they looked at Model D, they'll say, oh, they had a higher score.
So the way we rank this is that one was the most preferred model, four is the least.
And I know you said it on the bottom, but they don't always see that. They're looking at, see, we didn't, okay. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Keep going. You're doing good for me. Thank you. That's what work sessions are for.
So this one is actually looking at parents, and then we break parents into grade-level bands based on their kids.
So you're saying that out of all the parents, and you remember that number? I don't. I remember the total. If you have the number of parents, they preferred Model A?
Yes. Model A has the smallest number, which means they are most preferred.
Okay, but the elementary really showed us up, didn't it? They really went pretty big for it, didn't they?
Yep. Among all those numbers, elementary.
And then next in line was your middle. Middle wasn't too bad, if one is your preferred ranking. Okay. So your overall ranking there was for me. I have to say for me. Okay, keep going.
So this one is employee by their job roles.
Wow. So this would include teachers?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. See, hearing things and people talking about a few people, and then when you look at thirty-eight thousand people, how many of the thirty-eight thousands were teachers? But everybody had an opportunity, just like we don't vote. They didn't take the survey. So how many teachers responded? Because I'm hoping that those who asked these board members and our board members to go back to go back and do this, that they voted. I hope they're in the number.
So, for the OCPS employee, we have 5,238 respondents. Hold on, for instructional personnel, we have about 4,000 instructional personnel.
Like they do when they vote on the contract. So, people are saying, let my life, just let me live. So, what I'm hearing here today is a very small amount of people that had an opportunity to speak and give a preference on something that is so important to some people, it wasn't that important to them, to vote. Just let us decide. Keep going. Now, where am I? I don't know where I am here. And the reason why I'm saying that, and I've asked Dr. Jenkins in the past, my district is divided up. And you all, before I leave here, we're going to have to get a name for us, some kind of way. And we did that when we had six superintendents. But we really don't have any identity, even when we honor the teachers within the area. One time, I was a part of the north, the south, no, I was a part of everything except one. I think we didn't make the east, but we had like almost near Lockhart. Where are we? I know where we are, I don't want to embarrass you. I really don't. But I mean, I'm telling you, we are part of one of these. So, how did you break this down? By high schools? Or you did it by learning communities? Did you do it by districts? If you did it by districts, I will be in several.
So, all of the data are broken down in the cross-tabulation based on the survey responses. So, in the survey, we did not ask specifically which learning community you are in.
So, and I thank you, you all are so wonderful. So, you really set these up by learning communities?
We did not set it by learning community.
Okay, very good. Keep going. Your numbers are still high in Model A.
The participants were asked to list a geographical location they are in. So, that's how we reported here.
Still extremely high.
That's all the information we have for Model A. Is there anything else you would like to see?
I'll go back to the last slide. I think you heard several board members, Member Johanna and Member Gould. I think you've, you heard them, all of us mentioned this. And parents, I think, I gave you what parents told me to say today. That the factors is something to consider. And so, with that in mind, I know we're not voting, but if I had a preference to vote today, I would have to vote for A based on what was turned in. And we did have quite a bit of time. Matter of fact, Dr. Jenkins, I want to say hats off to you and your staff for a very efficient operation of being able to get into all of our communities, into all of our high schools in a way of connecting to get this information back to the board in a very timely manner. I thank you so very much for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. I've got a, I've got a quick question. If you can clarify for me, on Model A, the current start times, I think it's really kind of your first spreadsheet. And it probably doesn't factor into the outcome, but I'm just struggling to understand one thing here. It's very first one, where it actually lists the times before the survey. Thank you. Okay, the first one, there we go. So, the high school, end time 2:20, Wednesday, early dismissal, an hour earlier, 1:10. So, that's an hour and 10 minutes shorter. And the end time versus, and the early release time for the elementary school? For some reason, I thought these, are these all consistent? Are we sure that we've moved these times back consistently? So, let me try, let me try. So, high school end time is 2:20, and on early dismissal day, it's 1:10. So, that's an hour and 10 minutes. But on Model B, high school start time or end time is 2:40, and it moves back exactly an hour. On the current schedule, the elementary school end time is at 3 o'clock, and on early day, it's 2:10 rather than a full hour. And yet, for the Model B, it's exactly an hour. So, why is the Wednesday different on A and B in terms of the reduction in time?
Thank you. The standard length of day for each, for high school is seven hours. Elementary is six hours and 15 minutes. And middle school is six hours and 27 minutes. The Wednesday release was the times we were given, so they're close to an hour. Some of them may be off by a few minutes, but it's still the total instructional time during the course of the year. But the standard length of day for high school is seven hours, six hours and 15 minutes for elementary, and six hours and 27 minutes for middle school. And that's where one of the complications, when we come switching tiers, is the end times, which causes the start times to start later. And when the models were mentioned about Hillsborough, high school and middle schools both have the same length of day.
Makes it much easier.
Yes.
Makes it much, much easier. Yeah, we can, we can compress 45 minutes at least if we had everybody with the same number of hours. But starting this conversation with, we've seen tremendous progress by having that extra hour. I didn't think there was any appetite by the board members to decrease that, and I certainly don't have any. The only, I come back to, I'm still trying to understand why Model B has an exact hour rollback on high school, on elementary school, the second, the elementary school with an extra half an hour, yet middle school is, is not an exact hour, it's an hour and 10 minutes. And yet, when I look at our current models, none of them are an hour, only middle, only the third one is an hour. Dr. Jenkins, do you see what I'm talking about? And again, I doubt that it's relevant to this conversation. It's just when I, when I see an abnormality in something that doesn't make sense, now I'm starting to calculate to make sure that our compression is right and that we are down to. It looks like you've compressed this down, most cases, all the way to 40 minutes. Correct? Time between?
Yes, the time between, ideal time is 60 minutes.
Yes, and you've compressed it all the way to 40 minutes.
We can do 40 to 45 minutes.
I was also looking at that, because I thought if we could even compress five or 10 more minutes, it could make a big difference, but you've really compressed it pretty tight.
And the challenge, when we do it too tight, the buses will be late getting to the next school.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate that. It was one of the reasons I was looking at that, and that's how I stumbled onto this. Thank you. Let's go to Dr. Jenkins and then Member Kestrel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so I was looking at my list of questions, and it occurred to me, I didn't answer one of the questions earlier, forgive me for not remembering who actually posed it. It had to do with childcare or daycare, particularly for middle school students. So, I want to explain, essentially, we would try to move some of our after-school programs to before-school, but you have to understand one difference. That means the parents have to somehow get the children there. If they are with us already and they remain behind for the after-care, there's no transportation issue. If we're saying school does not start until 9:45, but we are open at 8:45 if you want your children to be supervised earlier, the parents would then be responsible for getting them there, which goes back to one of the board members' concerns that those families that have the greatest financial struggles would be under pressure. If they got them there, they could certainly be supervised. And for example, for the YMCA at our middle schools programs, if we switch them to the morning, parents would be responsible for getting them there. We can't have the buses get them there early, or we'd be in the same predicament. And so, I neglected to answer that question earlier. A before-school program trying to help those middle schoolers requires the parents, either the student to walk or ride their bike there earlier, or the parents to get them there. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. You said that after-school is not a problem. The parents still have to pick the kids up, correct? It's just that generally it's at the end of their workday. Got it, thank you.
That's correct.
Member Kestrel, and then Member Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add two more cents. I appreciate everyone's comments and the discussion. I specifically want to reiterate that I'm aware that these, the models that we were given are cost-neutral because of the given that our transportation dollars are so tight. So, I know that when we were in Tallahassee, we did ask particularly for more transportation funding, and we stated those facts to them, and they were surprised. They didn't say anything else other than, oh, really? But, so, I don't know if there's any appetite to give more money for transportation. That takes a lot of will on behalf of the legislature. I will continue to make that case as well. I certainly appreciate the complication around our community of low-wage earners. And the impact of changing a schedule is not just on students, but the whole family. And it reverberates through every aspect of our schedules, whether it's childcare or getting to and from school, or parents getting to work on time, or kids getting to work on time. And those are not issues that I dismiss. I realize that they are very important. And I, it's something that I think we have to take a greater community effort. Like Member Gould mentioned, the Alice report. A big, a shared community effort to address those needs and affordable housing, wages, transportation, food deserts. I mean, we are impacted in every, every aspect. And I wonder if, on another note, as far as adjusting the middle school for the time that they get out, I believe they also see, they also have seven classes a day. And I wonder if we could adjust that to six classes a day, even though it would mean that they may not have one of their electives. If it is a way to kind of adjust the times so that kids can get home at a reasonable hour, and if it does make a difference, I'd like to look at that as well in our models. And then something that no one else has really mentioned, and I'm shocked. If we could look at a model that possibly expands the school week to Saturdays and Sundays. Just kidding.
Oh.
No, that's a joke. I was just kidding, but. I was kidding for anyone else out there listening and having, be shocked. Okay. No, I was just kidding about that. But I understand that it is very difficult, and I appreciate everyone is looking at all options. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon.
Yes, I have a question for my learned colleague over here, being that she's an educator, and I can speak to that. Would you be willing to teach? I didn't think so. I didn't think so. I would, I'd be glad to teach. Okay. All right, let me, let me just say this, Madam Chair, I'm piggybacking on what you brought out. You said if anybody had, you know, something, a topic or whatever that we would like to talk about, this is really wonderful. People don't know, this is our first time talking. We've never talked, I haven't spoken to any, none of you. I mean, not even in any meetings. We haven't had a chance to do this. So, with that, I'm asking, I know we, I saw another work session for this. Was that a mistake? That might have been a mistake. Okay, it was on my calendar, believe it or not. But for another work session, but I know you may not be able to schedule it right now, but from hearing everybody concerned, everyone up here is concerned about the outcome. They're concerned about not disrupting families. They're concerned about transportation, and above all, they're concerned about the children. So, I would love to see us come together with the superintendent in another work session where we can brainstorm and see what avenue that we could take and what we would like to pursue. I'm a dreamer. Everything that I have in my district, they said it would never happen. They said ACE would never happen. They told me I would never be able to tear down Evans High School. They said that if we tear down Jones, we would never get it built. And they said that I would never get the four middle schools brand-new. This board did it. They said we would never have Unitarian standards. I'm a dreamer, I'm a dreamer. And I love to spend the millionaire money. I really do, because they come in and they help us. So, I'm wondering if we can get a session and put our foot in the door with Mayor Jerry Demings. Because they are asking for one particular thing, I don't see why. We don't get it all. And I know Pam was over there, and that's the first time I heard her, Member Gould, with the 30 million, 50 million. But listen, they gave 50 million, because I was listening last night, with the water. The legislative, Karen, you did that bill too. You signed it. I looked at your name was on that bill. You let them have that water. And the water, all the water needs belongs to Florida, and nobody needs to come in and bother. Well, everybody did, because they needed it. They needed the water. They needed the water, but they gave 50 million, our legislators gave 50 million, and a whole lot of other things they gave away. Okay? So, I really feel that we could maybe, I'm asking if Dr. Jenkins and you could consider, and if the board doesn't want to do it, I'll be glad to go in session and meet and see what we could do. I know we can get something out of it. I know we could be a partner. It could be a joint effort. Buses are just sitting, doing the date. They are waiting. The buses are waiting for the kids to get out at 2:30, 3 o'clock, 3:30, 4 o'clock. What are they doing while the kids are in school? Maybe we might could do, I could think of a lot of things we can do, okay? Those buses might be able to paint them a different color. You know, it doesn't have to be, it could be Orlando. It could be the scenic route, like the Lynx do. It could be little scenes on our school buses, you know? And then the people, the tourists could be using our facility. I mean, these buses could be being used at cost, Mr. Wayne, don't panic, at cost, and the school board can reap some of the residuals, okay? But I think we could work this out. I know it can be done. They are going to get buses, okay? They're going to get buses. Now, are we going to be able to get, be a part of that part? So, Madam Chair, when I'm asking you to see if you could get a work session, not for 20 minutes, to do a 20-minute rollback, because I'm not really in favor of that, that I'm willing to listen. But to get, to brainstorm, where can we go? Our budget is coming up, we need to get with the superintendent so we can set priorities. And from what I'm hearing today, transportation is a major priority. So, with Dr. Jenkins and you coming together with Dave, I am asking that that be a part of one of my little nitpicks to put on the agenda.
So, Dr. Jenkins, as we, we're going through segment by segment the budget, anyway. So, that would tie into that. I think what would be really helpful for us to have when we come back to just, to brainstorm what other options we have to consider, is definitely to have a breakdown of if we compress the schedule, what is the capital cost? What is the operating anticipated cost of what those options could look like? Because in order to find a solution that involves compression, we're going to have to have that data as a starting point, so, yeah. Okay. And then we have Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Gordon, did you have, Dr. Jenkins, did you have additional questions?
I was going to say, I believe it was Member Gallo that asked me that question earlier today. Actually, if you look back at the old presentations where we had maybe eight or nine different models, those dollar amounts were actually included. They can be updated, but those dollar amounts for adding additional buses or adding additional teachers are in the older version. In fact, some of her parents had looked up the old slides, so they knew it was quite costly. We can get those updated if there are any changes since the last time they were provided and have it available for that actual work session when we review operations.
But Dr. Jenkins, if I, if I can, there was.
We're thinking way above that. We're not thinking about that. We're thinking way ahead. We're, we're thinking way ahead.
And, and Dr. Jenkins, the one thing about the data that was put out a couple of years ago is it didn't include, part of that data was extending the hour of, the hour of operation for some of our middle and elementary schools. And we didn't include that cost for that. And so that was very misleading. It wasn't in the PowerPoint slide. Yes, the teacher costs. Remember that variable that was not included in there? So just want to make sure when we look at it, we look at all the costs. Yeah, member Gallo.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank my colleagues up on the dais for this robust conversation. I appreciate everybody's different viewpoints. It helps when we all come together and are able to have these conversations because some things that I think of, others might not, others that they bring forth, I may not have considered. So I really appreciate this dialogue. I really do. I love this board. I love how we operate, even when we don't always agree. So thank you. Thank you, ladies. With that being said, I recognize the challenges that we have in Orange County. And we don't ever want to further harm our parents, our communities, our teachers by putting something in place where kids can't go to their second jobs. There aren't caregivers for young children. So we do recognize those challenges. I actually like Dr. Gordon's idea. I think to find a solution, we're going to maybe have to dig deep and be really resourceful. And we're going to have to think outside the box. And one, a parent at one of my community meetings actually asked me, have we thought about working with Lynx? There's a Lynx bus in one of the parks that goes straight by Glen Ridge every day. And they're like, can't they bring some kids? So maybe we do need to brainstorm and look at some of the, you know, outside-of-the-box type of solutions that we can come. Because I, I recognize the challenges and I understand the challenges. And I do not want to burden, further burden our community, our teachers, or our parents. I know a lot of people don't want the change, and I respect that. But I just, I feel like when you look at attendance and you look at the research, that if we have to get creative, let's get creative. But I think the kids deserve it, and it's worth our time. Thank you.
Thank you, member Gallo. And I think that, again, I think that the feedback we're getting from parents is based on the revenue-neutral option. And I think that the answers might be different. Lynx did approach us at one point early in this conversation under their former executive director. But their idea was, how could they take on some of our routes? The fact of the matter is, we have a much bigger busing operation than they do. Dr. Gordon is talking about a different approach, and that's how do we, how do we make sure that our buses are fully utilized as a revenue source? So a kind of a totally different approach towards dealing with that. So, and something I don't think has been put on the table. So I think that's also a starting point. So all ideas are always welcome. As I said a little while ago, we're dealing with reality, but none of us are happy with reality. And we are, none of us are walking away from this, but we'll just keep looking for options until we find one that works. So with that, any further business to come before the board during this work session, Dr. Jenkins? If not, then this meeting, oh, I'm sorry. Member Gallo?
Just because I feel like there might be questions in the community. What are our next steps? We had this workshop. We've discussed it. So what, what are our next steps?